So I would like to call to order this school committee meeting for April 24th, 2023. Could we please rise to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening, early this evening. Oh, great, we have our student rep here, that's great. Great, okay, so. Anyway, roll call. Kathleen Amrell.
Yeah.
Chris Oliver.
Yeah.
Elizabeth Coughlin.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
Great, so I ask everybody, including myself, I think I did it, to turn our, anything that's ringing off. And I just want to mention that this meeting is being broadcast by DCTV, live broadcast, correct? And will be rebroadcast on Channel 9 on Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00, Friday at 6:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. And then again on Channel 18 on Monday and Saturday at noon, on Thursday at 3:00 p.m. We begin each meeting with allotting 10 minutes for public comment. And so that I ask if anyone here would like to come up to the podium to, for public comment, please do so. We allot 10 minutes, and so just in case a lot of people want to come up, be mindful of keeping your remarks short and stating your name first. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren E. Nixon. I am a Dartmouth resident and a parent to three children, two of which are in the Dartmouth School System. My husband and I are graduates of Dartmouth High School, class of 2005 and class of 2006. I am a social studies teacher at Dartmouth High School, where for the past six years I have taught mainly AP World History, but also Psychology, US History I, US History II, and World History. I have been a co-advisor of the National Honor Society and an assistant choreographer for the Dartmouth High Theater Company since 2018. It has been, in my time of being involved with these clubs, I and my fellow colleagues who take on these extra responsibilities have not seen an increase in our stipends. This includes stipends for not only clubs and activity positions, but also sports coaches, music programs like marching band, indoor percussion, indoor color guard, and class advisors that put on large-scale events like prom and other fundraisers. These types of positions require people to put in a lot of unseen work, hours of work that is more than what is just implied in the description posting for a stipend position. My own position as co-advisor, we regularly spend at least 100 hours a year between fundraising activities and preparing for the induction ceremony for the next incoming class of members. Like my colleagues, I would say we all do this for the kids, why else are we in education? We do it for the kids. But at the same time, I do it also because I enjoy it. And as much as I hear thanks, it doesn't really feel like it when I'm not being compensated for my time when we haven't, our teachers haven't gotten a raise in their stipend positions in over 10 years. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Renee Viera, co-president of the Dartmouth Educators Association. And on behalf of all the DEA members and my co-president, Jody Purisi, we would just like to welcome Dr. June Saban-McGuire to our school committee meeting tonight. And we look forward to having positive relationships with you in the years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stealing our thunder, Renee. Since, if nobody else is up, I guess we'll close public comment. But since you just sort of stole our thunder, I would love, as chair, to turn it over to my co-chair, who spent some time doing the grit work and getting, and part of the original committee to.
Yep, with Dr. Jenkins.
With Dr. Jenkins to, to do a nice announcement, a formal announcement, please.
Sure.
Turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Since we were going to hold this off until other matters, but if it's okay with the committee, we'll, we'll make the announcement official. As many of you have read in the paper this past week, or even today, I think, was when, when the Santa Times got ahold of it, is that it is now official and on behalf of the Dartmouth School Committee, we'd like to welcome Dr. Saban-McGuire here with us this evening and congratulate her on this position, as well as looking forward to working with us. I will say that in the, it seems like the past two months now, that Dr. Jenkins, myself, and some other committee members from the screening committee that's here this evening, we've had the, we had the opportunity to meet with her first and continue the process. I've had some very fruitful conversations with Dr. Saban-McGuire, and I look forward to working with her in the coming, at least for my time, at least for the next two years under my tenure here on this committee. And I'd just like to open it up, if it's okay with you, to anyone else.
I don't want to put you on the spot. Would you love to come up to the podium to share a little bit? Great, excellent.
So. I think it's already on?
It is.
Okay, so first of all, I am thrilled to be here, and thank you so much for your warm welcome. I have to say that what attracted me to Dartmouth after that first, I would say to the screening committee first, thank you so much, because I could see how much work that the screening committee put in to really vetting the candidates and to putting forward the finalists to the school committee. So, and eternally grateful to the screening committee who saw fit to bring me forward. I also have to say that the folks that were school and district-based people who spent the day with me and the day in the district, and I know I wasn't the only candidate, so I so appreciate the time and the attention that you gave me that day to give me a real feel for who the people were in the Dartmouth Public Schools. Beyond that, I have to thank the students. I had an amazing experience meeting with a group of students at Dartmouth High School. They were thoughtful, really, excuse me, insightful, and gave me so much hope for the future, our future generation. And you should be so proud as a school community and our Dartmouth community, because if those students are representative of the student body in your school system, then you are really well on your way to having an outstanding school system. So congratulations. I listened to one of your teachers just speak about all the extra work they do. I mean, that is the work. I heard the students talk, again, about, about Mr., I'm going to say Ryan, because Shay. Mr. Shay, who says school doesn't end at 2:00, and that's because of the folks like yourself who are out there providing students with all those additional opportunities. I also want to say, and I know you have a long night ahead of you, so I'll keep it short. That's why I wrote notes, because I knew that would be important, that my commitment to Dartmouth, you need to know that I will be fully committed. I was here last week. I got to spend some time with Mr. Kylie and Ms. Genther. Genther, I have to get used to that rolling off my tongue, Genther. And, and other folks in your, in your school department. And again, so warm and welcoming, I felt so right at home. It does not hurt that I could see a little bit of water out my window. It's a little bit of a different environment than I'm used to. So I'm super excited to be in such a, and it's just more than that. It's more than the physical space, it's the people in the physical space. And I want to say that I'm especially thankful to the committee who saw fit to vote to bring me here as your superintendent. And my commitment to the community is that as your superintendent, I will do everything within my influence to work with every single one of you and everybody in the community, because I know Dartmouth is already a well-respected school system. But I look forward, again, Mr. Shay and I talked about raising, elevating the school to the best school in the state. And when I think about that, I think about it as a school district. And so really, I am just thrilled to be here, and I'm already ready to get to work. And I will be available at any time for anyone that needs to reach out or wants to talk. I plan on spending time in the district in the next few months. So thank you, I'm so excited to be here.
Thank you.
I need some, I need some Dartmouth swag.
We've got a great school store that's got plenty of swag.
Do my colleagues wanted to say a few words?
Yeah, let's see if my voice can hold up.
Oh, no.
You know, no, it's been a long weekend. But, you know, Dr. Saban-McGuire, thank you and welcome. And, you know, you and I have had a couple of conversations on the phone, and I look forward to working with you. It's an honor and a privilege.
Yep, I'll also just say welcome. We're really happy to have you onboard, and we look forward to working with you.
Yep, same here. We're the newbies. Look forward to growing with you.
I think I've said it all.
Yeah, thank you, I'm thrilled to have you as well. And it was nice meeting with you last week and making it official. And then again, here tonight, having you sort of for the community to see. So thank you, we're really grateful to have, you know, happy to have you and thrilled to see what's to come. Thank you. Great, excellent. Next on, next on, now moving on to our approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion for the regular session minutes from April 10th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Chair hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and next we have, I will entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes for that same evening of April 10th.
Gee, I get to do this, huh? So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
Second, I also know that we're always so relieved when Mr. Noons is back to make that motion. It's just like, we're all stumbling over the word. So we're glad you get to make that motion again, Mr. Noons.
Great, oh, sorry. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, and next we're moving on to old business. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Kylie, to talk about fiscal year '24 budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Amrell. So on Friday, a little late, we received some information from the town regarding this joint meeting. So it appears, everything that we were provided with appears that the current proposal on the town side is to fund us at a 3.1% increase. So we remain at that $588,000 deficit that we had previously talked about. I don't know what this meeting tonight is going to look like in terms of, in terms of discussion beyond the materials that were presented. Obviously, I hope that we can advocate for the schools, because it is going to have an impact. I can see a few ways to approach this deficit. I think we can either collaborate and try and figure out a way to narrow the gap. We could, as Mr. Noons discussed, we could go to Town Hall and fight for it, regardless of other recommendations. We could cut the budget. We could look at one-time sources of funding to stem the gap until we're able to address the, the impending Esser Cliff and sort of roll this into that. So those are really the four options that I see before us. If the boards tonight express some interest to work on this, I'd be happy to do that. I've certainly been open to that and, and, you know, hope that that's the preferred option for the group. If it isn't, then we have some hard decisions to make moving forward. So some of them probably won't be able to wait until our May 15th meeting, for instance. If we have to do a reduction in force, the, one of the contracts that would be impacted requires, well, it actually recommends notice by April 15th. It allows notice up until May 15th, no later than May 15th. So May 15th is our next meeting. So we may have to consider options for that. And obviously, I'll be prepared to do whatever we have to do, depending on how the other boards react tonight and what kind of support we can, we can gain. But there's some significant decisions that are going to have to be made if we can't somehow stem this gap. You know, I, I think, I've been here for 12 years. I think that the town has the ability to address this if there's the will to do it. It's not easy. You know, you have to maybe give up other things to address this. But I think that should at least be a conversation to be had, right? So, I don't know. So I'm hopeful, going to try and be optimistic that tonight will be, you know, that we'll have an opportunity for actual discourse on this, and that it's not just what it says in the materials that was sent to us. So that's my hope, but I'd be happy to talk about it some more if you have questions or thoughts.
Thank you for that. Do my colleagues have questions? Dr. Jenkins?
So, you know, you laid out some options for us. And I will say personally, I do not feel comfortable using one-time revenues to close the hole. We're already going to have issues in the next fiscal year. It just puts us in an even worse spot next year. If there were some immediate plans to try to address this through an override or something like that, I might feel a little bit more confident about that. But given the absolute lack of plans at this point, I don't, I feel very strongly that that option is not really, unfortunately, available to us right now. So I'm also hopeful that we can make some progress, you know, tonight. But I think, you know, basically, it's, we've got to come to some compromise, or we've got to reduce.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Dr. Jenkins on this. I'm not in favor, I know, you know, we've done a great job. Mr. Kylie's done a great job with managing our one-time revenue source of school choice. But we were expecting some kind of serious deficit next year, without sort of going away. So I, I am certainly of the mindset that if we, if we were to look at using one-time revenue this year to fix this problem, it's only going to grow exponentially next year. So, you know, as much, as much as it pains me, the FinCom and the Select Board really need to understand where we're at. And I think we need to make it clear to them that if we can't come, if we don't see anything, you know, any kind of movement this evening, that contractually, we're going to have no choice as to say what it is, start pink slipping people. That, that's where we're at with this. And I, I agree with Mr. Kylie. I think the, the town does have the capacity to fund us. I'm not sure, do, do we know what their, what was their certified free cash this year?
Five million. It's past year, a little over.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Noons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I totally agree with, with Chris and Shannon on this. Yes, you can put this date on the calendar, too. We agree. But in all seriousness, if, you know, I did have a discussion with Mr. Kylie beginning of last week about, you know, a couple of one-time revenues that sits in the back of my head. And, you know, the consensus was, yeah, we can use it. And, you know, the cliff in '25 really, you know, jumps out at us type of deal, and I agree. I think the money is there. You know, as I, as I said to Mr. Kylie, and I said at the last meeting, I'm going to find it. I'm going to do something, and I'm going to make the motion at town meeting and adjust our budget by that, you know, $1 million for discuss, you know, round figures type, type of deal. And I'll figure the accounts out. I will let the town clerk, my fault, the town, excuse me, the town moderator know. She'll have that motion from me beforehand if we don't get the budget that we need. It's as simple as that. I mean, this is, you know, this is, no, I won't even go there. This is just not acceptable, period.
Yeah, I, you know, I personally, not in favor of utilizing our one-time funds for all the reasons that everyone else shared. And also, in addition to, we have, the makeup of our committee is different. We're already compromising, which in my recollection, doing some shifting. And while we're thinking about those smaller class sizes, size of our class is going to be impacted, and that could sway the vote in terms of, yes, we have, since we've, how many years has it been that we've? Seven years, six years, school choice?
Oh, school choice, I think it's about seven.
Seven years, yeah. And it was right before I, yeah, got on. That, that's going to be something to consider in terms of what the class sizes and the impact of, of what we're already compromising with is going to, is going to do. And so for all the reasons and that reason, I, it's just not the right thing to do. We might not have that money, and we're going to need it for that, that cliff. Mr. Noons?
Yeah, I mean, you're right with school choice. I mean, if the, if the committee changes completely around the other way, I mean, in the course of four years, that money's gone.
Right.
And that hole is, you know, that's, that's worse than a black hole.
Right.
Type of deal, so.
Yeah.
We've got it, there's going to be issues, so.
Mr. Kylie?
So I, as a fiscally conservative guy who is in charge of making sure we stay afloat, am very uncomfortable using one-time funds for a recurring problem, right, that we have. We do have, and Mr. Noons and I touched base about this last week. He had inquired about a particular one-time revenue. Well, it's not revenue, it's funds, the kindergarten fund. It's $322,030. That's the full-day kindergarten reserve fund that was put in place when we first began to go to full-day kindergarten. We had half-day kindergarten for a long time. It's never been used, it sits there. We put the money into it with our own budget dollars through the years. We haven't contributed to it in quite a number of years. It could be a solution, in a short-term solution. What I would say about using one-time funds is the only way that I would be comfortable with that. is if there was a plan and a plan to address long-term the difficulty that we face. So that might be an override. If that existed and we could stem the tide until we were able to actually gain momentum and hopefully get an override, then I could, I could wrap my head around that in terms of recommending something like that. But those, I understand, and I wouldn't do it just to wait a year to then cut the same position. I wouldn't do that. But if we had a plan in place that we were going to attempt to address this more permanently, then, then I think it might be worth considering.
Okay. Anything else?
I have some free cash numbers I could, I could share. So since Mr. Oliver asked, it was $5,513,056 this year. Well, this, that would be fiscal year '22's certified. That's the last number that we have. It was $5,368,000 the year prior.
What was it the year prior again? Thank you.
The year prior to that, fiscal year '20, it was $6,378,908. The year prior to that, in fiscal year '19, it was $6,341,645. I can also tell you that local receipts, the excess local receipts, so that means receipts that are received that, above what is budgeted for local receipts. It's an important number. Fiscal year '22, $1,951,904. Actually, there's another number in there, but it's somewhere between, I don't have those numbers actually at my fingertips, but it's, it's somewhere between $1,005 and the $1,009 that I just mentioned. Fiscal year '21 was more than $1 million. Fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '19 were more than $3 million. So fiscal year '20 and '19 didn't face the, the impact of the pandemic. Fiscal year '21 and '22 bore the brunt of the pandemic. That's why you see those local receipt numbers dip. Hopefully, if the economy, you know, stays afloat, we can, you know, hope to see larger numbers there as well moving forward. So that's things to think about. Now, those funds are used for good purposes. They're not just hidden away. They're used to promote capital improvement projects in the town that we've benefited from a great deal. And those are necessary. So I'm not suggesting that, you know, that that's not a good use of them. It is. However, I think that the discussion should at least be something that we could take part in as to, you know, what those funds are used for, so.
Thank you.
Based on their financial, their own financial policies, I believe they said that free cash should be somewhere in the ballpark between 3% to 5% of the total operating budget each year. So, you know, even with their own policies, that's still considerably over.
Ninety million, be 2.7 to, 2.7 to 4.5.
Yeah.
So they're still ahead of the game.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions in advance of us in this meeting? No. Thank you. And so next, we're going to move on to new business, where historically, we vote as a committee for the last day of school. So I don't know if you?
Sure. So, so we had one snow day.
Yes.
And it was Dr. Gifford's snow day. It was not me. I can't take any credit for that. She got to do that right on her way out the door, so good for her. And so the last day of school right now is June 14th. So just like to, if you could vote that, make it official. That will be the last day of school for the 2022-2023 school year.
Great. I will entertain a motion that we deem June 14th, 2023, the last day of school.
Madam Chair, make that motion that June 14th, 2023 be the last day of school, subject to change if necessary.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
So that'll make middle school graduation the 13th.
Yep.
Great.
Polish up your speech, Chris. It'll be quick.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Excellent. And next, I'm going to ask Mr. Kylie that you talk a little bit about the next item, which is the 2023 summer sports camp.
Yeah, so this is another exciting one here. So we have been running the summer sports camp for a number of years. It serves students entering grades two through nine. I'd like to ask that you consider a little flexibility and we might squeak some first graders into that mix this year. But it has, there's nine different sports. It's over, let's see, it starts June 19th through July 21st. Last year, we had 406 students participate, so really good numbers. Lots of activities. We have baseball, softball, field hockey, flag football, basketball, lacrosse, soccer, volleyball, track and field. We are not going to increase the rates this year. So they're going to remain, for the, for the full weeks, they're going to remain at $80 a week. And for the four-day week, the July 4th week, is $65. And it's a great camp. And any money that we earn from the camp goes to help support our phys ed and athletic programs, so. It's a good one. It's great.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have one question. You know, we've been talking a lot about stipends and how we pay for, you know, people who support all the great program we do. And I was kind of interested, looking at your data about enrollment and coaches' expense because one would assume that those would correlate, but they don't seem to correlate. Like, some camps are big and there's low coaching expense. Some camps are small and there's high coaching expense. So I just want to make sure that all our coaches, I mean, it's a, it's a real deal at $80 a week. I mean, it's a real deal. I want to make sure that all of our coaches are being adequately compensated and that they're being equitably compensated.
I understand. Some of it is relating to the supervision for the particular sport, which can be different, like from sport to sport, as to how many students you can serve in a given sport. So that, sometimes there's multiple folks helping out with some sports, depending on the numbers of kids and what needs to get accomplished, so, but.
So there could potentially be more than one coach?
Yeah.
Like, so for instance, girls' lacrosse, there is 36 people and the coaching expense is $430. Girls' field hockey, there is 33 participants and nearly $1,300 in coaching expenses. So maybe there's two in the latter, but then it strikes me that the person doing lacrosse is maybe doing twice the work because they're supervising the same number of people, right?
We also utilize, yeah.
Coming from the Midwest, I'm not really, still don't know how lacrosse and field hockey are all that different. But they seem pretty similar to, you know, an outsider like me. So that's just what I'm kind of curious about, right?
I understand. We also do utilize some volunteers. I can get you some more data as to how many people we have in each group. But we also do utilize some volunteers to assist. So I can, I can provide you with more information if you'd like about.
Yeah, and just, I mean, I'd like for us to keep it in mind about, from my experience, as I spent a while as a parent shopping for camps, $80 is a total steal. So, you know, maybe it's time for us to consider increasing that slightly so that our coaches get an increase in their stipend. Even at $100, it would be a major steal.
We did consider an increase. And where we are with the camp, we felt like we wanted to get as many kids participating as possible. So we kept it, but we have considered one for this year. But we'll push that off to next year.
Anyone else?
You know, I always sort of bring up something that is in, under consideration, but just making sure that, you know, a couple of the offerings are outside of the extended school year so that students who are in summer school are able to also participate and not, you know, affect the education piece. But you've always been good about that, but I always want to make sure I ask. So, so are we voting on this or is it just, it's in?
I think I just vote for your support to operate this, the summer sports camp since we are charging.
Okay. Will I entertain a motion that we, that we move forward with the summer sports camp?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what do we have next? Superintendent's update?
Doing a lot of talking here. I can't wait till I don't have to do this anymore. So, May 4th, 5th, and 6th, we have Mamma Mia at the high school, so that's, that's exciting. I think I'm going May 4th, so I think I'm going to the first one. The last time I saw Mamma Mia, my oldest daughter was in my wife's belly. We saw it in Boston, so I'm like, okay, she's 20 now. So it's been a while since I've seen Mamma Mia, but I'm looking forward to it. And tickets are available at dhstheaterco/booktechs.com, so get your tickets. Spring sports are about a third of the way through now in their season. It's flying by. Teams are off to a great start. Participation was really substantial, more than, more than we anticipated this spring, so that's been great. One thing I did want to mention, you know, since we're, it's somewhat budget-related as well. We had a tiered focus monitoring visit from the Department of Ed that I mentioned at a previous school committee meeting. The one area of focus was on our ELL program. So we had proposed, you probably remember in our budget, an additional ELL teacher. It is, this is an unofficial draft finding, so this is not a finding for sure at this point, but it appears it will be, that we need to provide more support with, you know, in the ELL program overall and more time for kids in that program. So we knew that that was, you know, coming, obviously planned for and built it into the budget. But, you know, so that'll be an official one. We'll share, share obviously the official results when we get them.
Great.
That's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to, Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things regarding the music program. Our color guide was out in Dayton, Ohio last week for WGI World Guard International Finals. Unfortunately, they ran into a tough streak between an early seed and, you know, 50 groups in the category and only, you know, 20 or 25 advancing to the semifinals. They didn't get out of the preliminaries, unfortunately, but they've had a good year overall. This past weekend, our percussion ended up in sixth place Saturday night. Had the best show of the year. I think, you know, from what I saw of the groups and that from before Dartmouth right to the end, which was Chino Hill, our students were the only ones that got a full standing ovation. I mean, they just absolutely rocked the house and it was great to see, type of deal. And then, let's see, today's Monday. Yesterday, I'm losing days here. Yesterday afternoon, our wins program, which is in their second year only, placed third overall, type of deal. And that's moving up a category. They went from scholastic A to open class, so, which is, which is a higher and tougher class. And they did, again, did a phenomenal job. The students were great. They had a good time all week and such. So I'm very proud, personally very proud of them, so that's what's up with them.
Great. I was watching some, you know, seeing some pictures on social media. It was really great to see. Anyone else?
It's always interesting, I apologize. It's always interesting. I mean, we're on, Saturday night, we're unloading the truck. This is 5 o'clock Saturday. We're unloading the truck with all the pit equipment, you know, and percussion and that type of, and there are people, you know, mobbing around the truck, watching. You know, all we're doing is unloading, you know, that type of deal. And then, then when they start warming up type of deal, it's just a, it's just a mad show.
Yeah, yeah. It's so good. Great. Anyone else? Well, I'm excited to share. Well, first I will say, I think Wednesday night, the middle school has National Junior Honor Society induction. A little over 40 students, which will be, I think it's, I don't even know, 7 o'clock. I don't know. I have to read my memo. But at any rate, that's exciting. And then I also want to mention, because we're not meeting again until after this event, but we are, the Dartmouth Special Apparently Advisory Council is hosting in-person again our Community Resource and Craft Fair. And so it's a free community event. We have well over 140 tables of local craft vendors and local South Coast community resource vendors. And all, there's also Phoenix on the Fly, who has, is going to have a food truck there. And all proceeds benefit, we put it right back into the school's unified athletic program. We support the Unified Bowling Club. We support Dartmouth's Best Buddies Chapter. And this year in particular, we're a portion of what is received through the craft vendors' rent of space, the resource vendors are free, to support the new Atlas Transition Program, advancing towards life after school. So Sunday, May 7th, at Dartmouth High School, between 10 and 3, encourage folks to stop on by. It's a fun day and we're just excited to be back in person. And that's all I have.
It's May 7th?
May, Sunday, May 7th, 10 to 3. I'm so excited. Exhausted but excited. Great, and so that's all I have. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 15th at 6:30 back at Dartmouth High School in the auditorium. Is that wrong? Okay, so back in our usual location. I shouldn't be reading my notes.
Unless we're going to have a really big crowd.
I was hoping not. So back in the media center at the high school. And so with that, I may need help with this. I will entertain a motion for us to adjourn into joint session with the Select Board and Finance Committee and to return to open session in order for us.
No, because I'll make the motion and go right to executive session from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this council tells me different.
So we just need a motion to adjourn?
Just a motion to?
To adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn this meeting and to attend?
Not an open session, the joint.
Attend the joint session with the board of selectmen and the Finance Committee at 6:30.
I will entertain that motion.
Second. I'll second it. All in favor? A little roll call?
No, we don't need to roll call.
No, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.